Members of the City Council, please attend to the call meeting of the City Council to be held in the sixth floor conference room, 801 Crawford Street, 5:00 PM, Tuesday, April 22nd, 2014, for the purpose of a public work session. In addition, you may consider a motion to go into closed meeting but order the mayor. Mr. Cherry?
Here.
Mr. Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Meeks?
Here.
Ms. Simmons?
Here.
Ms. Randall?
Here.
Mayor Wright?
Here.
Mr. Rowe?
Thank you, Jennifer. We've got three things tonight in our session. The first is the Community Development Watch Program. You have an executive summary before you. This is a public hearing tonight in conjunction with a public hearing on the budget. And so I might ask Bob to come up and walk you through this and how we're proposing to allocate the funds for 2014-15. Bob?
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor.
Hey, sir.
Vice Mayor, members of council. My pleasure to come before you tonight to present the consolidated action plan, five-year action plan proposal, which is subject of a public hearing later on this evening. You've got at your seats there quite a bit of documentation which you can read over the course of the next couple of weeks. But we're going to summarize really the highlights are in there so you don't have to read through all of that in the next few minutes. So we're going to try to hit the highlights of the program here. Oops, I go too far. Okay. So just to give you a little background, as you're aware, the purpose of the budget here is to do the priorities for your five-year consolidated plan. And within that, we're going to discuss your CBDDG program, which you're well aware of, and the home program, including the city's entitlement under that. And just for a little background, we'll give a little historical context. City's been receiving funding for this program since 1974. Over the last five years, the amount of funding has been decreasing. As you can see, in 2009, it was at 1.7 million; 2014, we're at 1.4. It's been slowly declining. You'll see some information there on the home funding, of course. Some of that money was repaid back to HUD. So the home entitlement was reduced accordingly. And our current five-year consolidated plan, of which you'll be working on here, that expires the end of June. So July 1st becomes the beginning of the new five-year consolidated plan. So, goals of the plan. Like almost any plan, the goals are really to establish a comprehensive vision for how the city's going to address issues such as affordable housing, adequate infrastructure, neighborhood sustainability, and a host of other issues using these funds that are coming through the city's entitlement from HUD. And with that is also the continuum of care for helping the homeless, and that we've spent a fair amount of time and effort in recent years working on that issue. So, as we are evaluated by HUD, the priorities of the five-year consolidated plan are rated against the city's comprehensive plan, as well as the statutory requirements and purposes of the CBDDG and home programs. And it's against those policies when HUD takes a look at your proposed plan, they evaluate the appropriateness of what we're proposing the funding be expended on. So priorities. Number one, I think there's a critical point you want to make. One of the number-one priorities is to provide effective city program administration and planning. I think you're aware, these funds that come to the city from HUD, they're the responsibility of the city to administer, to manage the program. And so one of our priorities is to make sure that we are effectively managing that. And you will see when we get a bit further into the presentation, we are proposing some funding for the administrative side for the city to assist in that. And we'll talk about it a little later, primarily in the area of accounting, meeting the accounting requirements, so the program to make sure our accounting all lines up. We're also doing something which has been a council priority and something the city managers discussed previously a priority, which is supporting neighborhoods by improving infrastructure, facility services, and reducing blight. So you're going to see, I think, when you look through the plan, a shift towards more bricks and mortar within the neighborhoods and supporting the neighborhoods than you may have seen in the past. And so as we go through the specific projects and line items there, you'll see that as well. In addition, as with, you know, previous years, you'll see sustaining homeownership, providing decent and affordable housing, there's some economic development initiatives here, and maintaining housing opportunities and support services for persons with special needs. So all of that is wrapped up into your plan. So, very quickly, the objectives of the CBDDG program we've come out here is to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environment, and expanding economic opportunities for principally low and moderate income individuals. And I think that's a key to bear in mind, the targeted individuals in the community these program funds are intended to serve. And the funds can be directed towards acquisition, relocation, demolition, rehabilitation, construction of infrastructure, public facilities, a whole host of public facilities and things that can be done to serve this population. So, as we go into this budget cycle for FY15, we mentioned earlier at your entitlement, 1.4 million dollars. There's some reprogrammed funds and some prior year income funds, if you're total of 1.8 million dollars to allocate during the process this year. So we break these down into different categories and make it a little simpler to take a look at. We have funding for housing programs, for public services. The biggest one is community development, economic development, and some administration planning. As I was mentioning earlier, we're putting a little bit more resources to the city in terms of administration and planning. We also, so we go to the housing programs, and this will be from the previous slide where we break these things down into categories. This is money that would go to emergency housing rehab. There's $195,000 projected for that.
I'm sorry, what is emergency housing rehab?
Well, that'd be the case where you have someone who might have had a major structural failure at their house, say they lost a roof or heating system, and they need some assistance and funding to go back and put the house back into living condition. So they would go through the, this was a program run by the housing authority. And they make emergency loans to make emergency repairs.
Would that also include natural disasters, it may cause?
It could.
Some of those disadvantages.
It could.
I've heard of some programs doing that.
It could. These are programs that have typically been funded in previous years by the city. If you look in earlier years' funding, you'll see a number of these public services programs being funded. We, once again, this year are proposing.
What's the Cheervention Program?
I let Jeff Kramer, our project manager here, come over and address specifically the money to go source that Cheervention Program, which is...
Cheervention Coordinator?
It's a program that they run through the city's Parks and Recreation Program. I don't know the specifics of it. I know they tie in cheering to it. I think it's part of the after-school program that they do.
We were able to bump up the allocation to the Independence Center this year?
The Recreation Center.
So they're getting a little bit more money.
Well, I understand about the Independence Center, but I'm still about as clear as mud on the, exactly what the Cheervention Program is.
If I may. Good evening. The Cheervention Program is basically mentoring after-school care programs. So as far as our after-school, we actually have a cheer program where we do the cheers, but also it's about mentoring, it's about homework studying, good self-esteem, teaching children basic, you know, self-reliance skills, life skills, that type of thing. So we call it Cheervention because we want kids to cheer for good health, cheer for wellness, cheer for just having the basic good neighborhood skills that you need to be successful in life.
Is that program, no, I'll yield to you.
One of the things that I've noticed in one of the programs that I observed, they also do a lot of tutoring.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, tutoring with one another, and children are some of the best teachers with one another when they are having problems. I've noticed that in one of the programs I've observed.
Where's the programs, are they in the schools?
They're in the Recreation Centers.
Okay.
Yes, sir. So, Kappa, Weyman, Neighborhood, J.E. Parker, JFK, and then also Port Norfolk. Those five Recreation Centers.
Okay. Okay.
Thanks, Jeff.
Questions? We have people here can answer. Moving, moving. Oh, we were there. Okay. So, now under the largest item in the budgets, the community development line. And here, I think you'll begin to see some programmatic changes here. You see some money allocated for park improvements, and that would be through Parks and Recreation. There's an ADA compliance replacement elevator proposed for the children's museum. We have some funds set aside for recreation planning and development. And then there's some new things, some sidewalk improvements. That's one of the, I'd say newer initiatives using CBDDG funding, which is providing more sidewalks in neighborhoods. We have some money set aside for flood control. You're well aware, as we're moving through this floodplain management program, we've got a number of issues that are coming up related to flood, flooding issues, and so we've allocated some funding, which we think is going to be required over time to implement that program.
Is this related to the flood study of a few years ago?
I would say this is related to the current flood study that's underway. The current changes to the floodplain management plan and the new flood insurance program, which is underway.
So, the study of, I don't know, five years ago was about a price tag of about a half a billion dollars?
Yeah, this is not for...
That's not what we're talking about. Because that was designed to eliminate flooding in the communities.
Right. And that was talking about the infrastructure that's needed, such as drainpipes, curb, gutter, swales.
That's what this is talking about?
You're right about the price tag. I mean, and the interesting thing about storm drainage, it's a quasi-judicial function of government. You can have a plan, but you determine the speed in which you implement that plan, not the courts. The basic rule of law is George can tell you, everybody's responsible for their own We can only take small bites at that big plan that was brought to you four or five years, six, maybe eight years ago.
But is this the 200,000, is that towards that?
It's, go ahead.
I would just say, this is a smaller, more targeted type of use of the funding than trying to address that larger, that larger plan, which is a much larger CIP kind of a function. Now, this could be done for some small neighborhood type modifications or improvements, you know, fixing certain drainage problems, but not, I would say, the grand scale of a citywide program.
But at this point, we don't know specifically what it's going to be used for in the community.
We don't have a project per se that it's addressed for, but it's going to go to storm water, because that's what causes floods.
I was trying to drill down to the...
Right. This is not attached to a specific project in a specific location.
So I think that's the same for neighborhood improvement?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And the thing is that you typically do worse first. I mean, if you've got a problem that you can solve that's really a crisis, and you can do it within this price tag, you do it. And if it meets all the statutory requirements of meeting the national objective.
What, I guess my question, I think the Vice Mayor was getting ready to ask you as well, when are we going to come up with the areas that we're going to spend the money in?
Well, it has to fit the criteria.
I would say, once we get through the budgeting process, and you say that's the direction you want to go, and we'd be coming back to you relatively quickly to bring forward a list of proposed recommendations. Because the funding would become available in July, and we want to start, you know, moving forward. We do have a timely requirement to spend the funds, so the anticipation would be, once we get through the budget process in May, if council indicates that that's, you know, a desirable expenditure of these kind of funds, we would come back, I would say, during June, certainly by July, with a list of projects, including sidewalks. We have the sidewalk projects, and all these have to meet the income criteria. So we'd be coming back to council with a list of recommendations to implement. And I would just say, bear in mind, this is part of a five-year... Sorry.
I was thinking, I don't ever remember seeing this kind of stuff.
That's correct.
I mean, this is just a whole new concept for HUD money, which is great. It means it's not national CIP. It's all things we need to do.
And it's the focus where, remember what I said in my budget narrative, the focus is on neighborhoods. We created the DNA, and now we're putting the resources into DNA. We're trying to, we're trying to turn the neighborhoods that need a turn in direction around.
I think another thing that gives people hope in communities where they have been slighted when improvements came around, certain sections of the city received improvements, and other areas continued to go downward. But this way, it puts them on a rotating plan where everybody can see a piece of the pie.
And I would just add, one of the things we will be implementing, we mentioned this, you know, increased administration and planning. We're going to track success or failure in being able to apply these funds in the categories, assuming these work, assume that funding for five straight years, remember we're doing a five-year consolidated plan here, so your, you know, 200,000 dollars in sidewalks turns into a million dollars with a sidewalk money out of your CBDDG budget, which you haven't applied before. So if you sort of think of that funding as a long-term investment, you can make, I think, a fairly significant amount of improvements over time. And if we're trying to get the ship turned to go more in that neighborhood improvement direction than where we've been in the past. So this is, as I was mentioning, this is a shift in, I would say, direction from councils, how you like your CBDDG money.
And you can still demolish blighted structures with the current eminent domain regulations?
I'd have to ask Fred about, I'll say this, you know, there's already an allocation of funding for demolition. This is in addition to, this is really extending. I think he's had some conversations with you about the situation in the community.
We've looked at this, and one of the problems with demolition is, when you acquire the property, you actually own it, and you have to pay for it and pay for relocation. We're shifting our focus back to the vacant blighted structures. We're declaring them unsafe, dangerous buildings. The police, the neighborhoods are all working with us, so when you make it to the top of the list, you get a letter and says, either you fix it, or I'll take it down. And once we take it down, then we put a lien on the property. So instead of paying 40,000, 50,000 dollars for the properties or 60,000, we pay 6,000 to 10,000. The blight's gone, it's a vacant lot, sure, but we can get more bang for our buck that way.
And they get their due process, because the codes make sure that due process is followed.
Sure. And I'd just make one other comment. This sort of shift in focus is less about acquiring property and more about doing neighborhood improvement. So I think you'll see the funding be shifted that way. So, for example, in the case of dealing with the blighted structures, the goal is to take the structures and not the own the lot.
We're approaching things that we get a chance, once every half-century, to do something great for a neighborhood. If we're going in with water and sewer improvements, let's look at the storm drainage. The pushback I get back from staff, are you nuts, John? Do you realize that this particular neighborhood doesn't have curb and gutter right now? The streets are not up to standards? Well, if we're going in and messing up the streets with water and sewer, let's determine how much it would cost to do that neighborhood right. And that's our goal. Just like the Churchland Bridge, you've had a discussion on, or you've heard feedback about a bike lane. We only get one chance to do this right for the next 50 years. And so, guess what? I've directed staff to do a bike lane that's separated from traffic. Because we're not going to get a chance to come back and retrofit that. We're not going to get a chance to do it 10 years later. 50 years from now, the council that's sitting here will then be saying, gee, do we put separation? So let's do our decisions right up front.
And this is the category we do under administration. Again, I think this is pretty consistent with where the funds have been allocated in the past, including some of the funding for PRHA's administration of their programs, and as well as the funding allocated towards the city. As I had mentioned, the city's piece will be a lot with accounting requirements back to make sure our program meets all the HUD requirements. And administering this program, what we want to be doing is tracking these to see if we're spending the money appropriately, if improvements are getting done, and if people are spending the money in a timely fashion, so that if that's not happening, we can come back to council and talk about, you know, some shifts in places where the money might be better served. So we want to make sure we're tracking all of this, as well as just, you know, putting into a plan. Okay. So now we'll just switch over very quickly to the home program. You know, we do have a home program. It has its own purposes, which is providing decent affordable housing to low-income households, expanding capacity for nonprofit housing providers, strengthening the ability of state and local governments provide housing, and leveraging private sector participation. So we do have a source of funds here, which, about 684,000 dollars, you can apply towards the home program. And here's the way they're allocated. Number one is homebuyer activities. I think we're well aware, we've got a pretty sizable project in Craddock, which we're trying to work through, that has had CBDDG funds applied to it. The goal out there, the national objective was to build and have occupied 12 homes out there. The city has a fairly high exposure to, you know, potential of not meeting the national objective. Recognize, one of the things you have to do is work with a builder to get the cost of the housing down to an affordable level that potential buyers in the neighborhood could afford. And so we're proposing that the, primarily the funding out of the home program be allocated in that program as we build and sell and have houses occupied. And so that'd be the primary use of that, of that funding source.
What's the tenant-based rental assistance? Can you speak to that program?
I'll let Jeff speak to that one as well.
We grant money to Portsmouth, yeah, Portsmouth Area Resource Coalition Park, and they run a tenant-based rental assistance program. They provide rent assistance, utility assistance, security deposits for people who are at risk of homelessness, and they'll pay their rent usually for a three-to-four month period until they become stable.
Thank you.
Okay. So here are the next steps in the process. Obviously, tonight is public hearing, and then this is part of the city council's budgetary process, and it's scheduled for May 13th, vote for adoption. Once those are adopted, or once it's adopted into final version, the adopted plans will be sent to HUD, and then we will begin to start to apply these funds for our new program you're starting in July. I think you've asked a number of questions, but if you have any other questions you'd like us to answer, we certainly have folks here who are glad to take a stab at it.
Can you back it up for a moment, back to the neighborhoods?
Which one you're looking at here?
Right there.
Right here? This piece?
Is there going to be enough allocation to take care of all those things?
Well, you know, there's never enough money, I would tell you, to take care of everything. Well, this is a sizable...
Because some of it would have seemed crucial, like recreation facility planning and development.
Right.
And we're going, think of this like bookends. This is one bookend. The third presentation you'll have tonight is on parks and recreation, and you'll see a big price tag for the next five years. And, yeah, this is just a drop in the bucket, but it's a start. Sidewalks is just a drop in the bucket, but it's a start.
Okay. It's just a totally new source of funding for these kind of...
Yeah.
And what did we give Independence Center before, 10,000, 15?
15.
It used to be 25.
Was it 15?
16. 16 we gave them last.
All right, 16, so we're going up to...
And that came out of the general fund in the budget previously?
Well, it's coming out of CBDDG. I don't know...
But prior to that, it didn't, it came...
It came out of CBDDG last year, didn't it?
Yeah, the last five years we...
You're right, Bill.
The last five years, we've been funding them out of CBDDG.
We had a tab in the budget for community organizations, and in fact, community concerts was one, had a whole list of them.
Well, this is a very eligible use of these funds.
Can we use, like, the Hearshelter or some of these other things from these funds?
Yeah, that gets in the public service, and you saw the allocation, Park gets some. Grants writing has been a real issue with the coalition being able to write. Would you come up, Brandon? This provides them the funding to go out and be able to hire somebody who can put together these laser-sharp grant applications that are for both the public and the private sector.
Yes, sir. The continuum of care funding, which was mentioned earlier, which is basically the funding for all the nonprofits and public entities that serve the homeless populations, apply for annually this continuum of care funding. And it is getting increasingly more competitive, and they're fewer dollars. And so, in order to put together the most competitive grant this year, we used a consultant for 5,000 dollars that, you know, helped us put the grant together. And the other thing about this grant process is, each year, HUD reduces the time that they release the requirements for the grant application and the time that it's due. And so you're basically bringing together all these groups of people to set their priorities and put the thing together in less than 30 days and turn it back into HUD. So it's an increasingly more difficult process.
And the allocation by categories controlled by the statutory requirements of the CBDDG So even if we want, we're maxed out on public service, even if we wanted to put more money into that, we can't.
John, before we leave there, one of the things that we need to make sure that the citizens understand, we have several different communities around in our cities, and some of them have received second time and third time updates, and other communities have never been addressed from the initial needs and problems that they had. I think that we need to bear in mind that we need to make sure that the sequential order of how we are going to do it. The taxpayers should be aware of it, and people who are living there need to understand that at some point, they may be getting something where probably in the last 10 years, they've been on that back list, and none of their services have been delivered, particularly in some of our older communities where there's flooding, and we do not have the sufficient curbs and guttering. We need to look at that. I think they've been in the mud holes long enough.
I agree.
Okay.
Yes, sir. My question was, and the funding I was referring to is the non-departmental funding, and I see the Planning Council for the Healing Place is, the proposal is 25,000. On here, I see 23. So is one replace the other, or is it a total of 40-some thousand?
Brandon, go sit down. Their original request was how much, the Healing Place? Do you recall?
The Healing Place is still in the planning stages. They're going to have to go to each locality in the Hampton Roads region and try to pull together both a capital commitment and an ongoing operating commitment. And optimally, right now, they're saying, they're shooting to start this thing in 2016. The regional task force in homelessness meets every other month, and we're getting updated information as to what our share would be, and I honestly can, off the top of the head, recall what our share would be for that, but it's something that's still in development. As you recall, there were two parts to that, a male facility first, and then a female facility. The siding issue still hasn't been resolved, and so until you know where you're going to put it, you don't really know how much it's going to cost.
And the money won't be spent. Again, the biggest issue is the location, and there has been talk about the surplus plan at the regional jail as a possible location. So this, at best, is a placeholder.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? These are good. And you're right, I'm glad that you picked up on the fact that there is a shift. There's a shift to putting the money to work in neighborhoods, in particularly low and moderate income neighborhoods.
Great job, sir.
All right. Our next... Our next, I know that you're getting a lot of email traffic and telephone calls from citizens, and not only citizens of Portsmouth, but schoolteachers who work for the Portsmouth School System but don't actually live in Portsmouth. And as I've, as you know, I've recommended the same appropriation amount, $46 million, that we gave the schools this year. And we think that that is adequate to run the same programs next year that they're running this year. Let me give you an example. Our general fund budget this year is going to be, this current year is going to be bigger by quarter of a million dollars than the general fund budget next year. And even with that reduction, we hadn't had the need to, let's say, cut out EMS or the detective or move garbage collection from once a week to twice a month. And what I want to do with this presentation, as you know, what we did last year, we gave you a detailed breakdown of what we thought the schools' budget needs were, and that's based on looking at their prior-year budgets and expenditures, which really should give you some idea on how much money they need. Now, we're on track to adopt our budget before the state adopts its budget. As you know, they don't have a budget yet. Typically, that budget is well-adopted. And so there are three budget proposals. There's a Senate proposal, there's the governor's proposal, and there's the House proposal. One of those three budgets may get adopted, and we want to walk you through the impact of each one of those budgets have on Portsmouth. Remember that state funding is allocated on a locality's ability to pay. The state has a composite index, so that more state money goes to a community like Portsmouth than to Virginia Beach. Virginia Beach has a greater ability to pay than Portsmouth. There are several factors that come into play. Income of your residents comes in, the real estate tax values, and this is a way that the state fairly allocates their money. And so they should be giving more money to communities that are least able to come up with money to pay for education. And so Carol's going to walk you through three scenarios, the Senate budget, the governor's budget, and the House budget. And let me tell you that each budget will provide more money to the schools than what our analysis shows that they need.
That's on the screen.
Good evening. You have in front of you a printout which may be easier to read than the screen, and I know this is a busy slide, but I want to walk you through what our process was and our analysis was for determining what amount of money the schools need in city funding this year. And the first three sections is the same in all three of them. What varies down at the bottom, as John mentioned, is the amount of state funding that would be available under each of the proposals. So we've ordered these from the highest amount of state funding to the least high, but all three proposals that are currently in play provide more money than our analysis shows that the schools need. And as John has mentioned earlier, our goal all along has been to right-size the school budget. As you know, there have been, the schools have generated significant surpluses in prior years, and what we are trying to do in right-sizing the budget is to reestablish the base based on what their actual spending and their actual required needs are. So our baseline then is the last actual spending document that we have, which is their draft CAFR. And the first section shows that expenditures and transfers out last year, fiscal year 13, was $131.2 million roughly. But there were some costs that were included in those numbers that were not related to operations, and in some cases were not appropriated by council. They had almost, about $560,000 that they transferred to the School Construction Fund, which is now closed. They transferred 1.2 million just in last year alone to the textbook fund over and above what the state said the required local match is, and they showed over $1 million in capital outlay costs, and we have now established that we are going to budget all of the schools' major capital programs through the city CIP process. So they had $2.8 million of this amount that was not related to their ongoing operations and to instruction. So if you subtract that out, the net spending that was related to school operations was $127.3 million. We inflated that number by 2% for '14 and 2% for 2015, which we believe is a reasonable amount to increase the budget by, and we don't have any detailed information from the schools that would allow us to make a determination otherwise. The next section may look familiar to you. It's the same recommendations that we included last year. There are efficiencies that can be gained on the administrative side that could directly reduce the schools' overhead costs, and that money could be used for the school's primary purpose, which of course is instruction. Last year, the city's actuary, Mercer, took the school's health insurance data and worked with the schools to evaluate that and determine that the schools could save $1.6 million a year by going to a self-insured health insurance model. And as you know, as we discussed, most agencies the size of the schools and the city are using a self-insured model because it saves, again, it saves overhead costs, particularly it saves the amount of profit that health insurance providers are making. The schools did not implement that change this year, and one of the areas in their budget that they say is going up significantly is their health insurance costs. We continue to recommend and believe that they can realize substantial savings by making that change. The second item has to do, again, with economies of scale and efficiencies. There are a number of areas where there are duplicate services being provided by both the city and the schools that could be combined and realize efficiencies, and those are in the areas of financial functions primarily, but there may be other opportunities as well. We don't need two purchasing offices. We don't need two accounts payable functions, two payroll functions, particularly when we're both using the same accounting system. It should be relatively easy to make those changes and to realize savings and to increase transparency. So if you subtract out those savings, and $100,000 is probably on the conservative side, the schools could save about $900,000 just in next year alone. So we subtracted that from the operating cost above, which is labeled D, and calculated their net operating cost needed for 2015 at $131,571 million. So from that total cost, we subtracted other funding sources, city local funds that are available to the schools, and this is a section that varies under each one of the three proposed, excuse me, three analyses. The $700,000 and the $1,170,000 come directly from the school's proposed budget. Those are their numbers. The state funding and the state sales tax comes from the Department of Education, which has provided information, school district by school district, of what the impacts of these three different budget proposals are. So if you subtract out all the non-city funds that are available, the net amount that's needed is about $43.6 million. If you compare that to the $46 million that the city manager has recommended, the manager's recommendation provides $2.4 million over and above that calculated need.
Now, this happens to be the best case. This is the Senate, and we'll now go to the governor's budget.
So the next page, all of the calculations are the same down to the net operating cost needed for 2015.
Can you hit the slide?
Oh, that would, yeah, that might be helpful.
John, sorry. Let's say they don't self-insure, what's going to be the number?
It's $1 million. It's $900,000, and we're over, we're way over. Doesn't matter, even if they stay hard-headed about it, it doesn't make any difference.
Well, go back to that other slide. Then this gets reduced by 1.6.
Right, that's what.
They still have.
Actually, $900,000.
No, no.
Sorry, let's get that.
It's 900, that's down to 1.6 million versus 2.4.
Right.
If they leave it like it is.
If they left it like it is.
Right, and the reason we're showing a half a year is that, like the city, their health insurance year runs from January to December, so if they were to change their model during the upcoming budget season, it would be affected with January.
All right, now let's go to the governor's budget. And again, all this is the same to this point.
Correct.
These are the different numbers, and you want to go to the last few lines here?
So, under the proposed state funding in the governor's budget, the net amount that would be required from the city is just under $44 million, which is $2 million less than what is recommended by the manager. So that, and the percentages are, the $2 million is 4.63% more than the net amount that we calculate. And finally, the third funding scenario is the House budget, which provides the least of the three options, but still provides a significant, excuse me, significant amount of money over and above what we calculate their needs are. The net city funding would, under the House budget, would need to be $44.4 million. That's almost 1.6 million less than what the city manager's recommendation is.
We thought it was really important for you to have this information. There's an awful lot of misunderstanding, and once mine could go to a point where it's, you might say it's on purpose, that it's disinformation that's out there. As Carol said, there's been a misalignment between the amount of money that you've appropriated and the actual amount of money that they need to run the schools. And this is not hyperbole. We know that it was $52 million. That was undisputed for the five-year period covered by the grand jury's report. It was $92 million if you take it back eight years, not five. And so again, this is an attempt to find the right size. And I told you at the last council meeting, and I'm not fearful of saying this, I really think that the school's finance department's in this right. They don't have a CFO, and I am prepared to send two of our finest folks down there to help. It's not about control, it's not about taking over. One is the accountant that serves the EDA and the PPIC, your liaison, no Andrea, she is very, very qualified, and the other is our comptroller. And to go down and load up their budget into GovMax, that's what we use, and GovMax is a very detailed program where you can drill down and find out what actually makes up a number. If you have X for electricity, it'll tell you all the details you need to know about that. And again, it's not about control, and I'll be the first to recommend to you that if we can help them on that way, and it comes back and they need not 46 million, but 47 or 48, I'll recommend that to you. But we need to know what they need.
Right.
And they can't generate that number. And we have issues, for example, about how much money really does it require for, let's say, fuel for yellow buses? Remember what we have explained before? On July 25, 2012, they encumber $900,000 for fuel. Okay, that's the first month of the fiscal year. Come June 30, 2013, they got $300,000 left over. We've seen it with the utility bill. So it's right-sizeing what is needed for each one of these expenditures, and that's what this is about. There is no need to cut the STEM program, there is no need to cut Starbase, there is no need to tell the teacher that's at the planetarium that your last day is in June. If they can operate the school system this year with the recommendation, with the state funds and the federal funds that are coming in, they don't have to cut a thing next year. Not a thing.
John, I think this is, you know, this is very good, and I thank you for your willingness to go down to help, because we've got, we've got to get this together.
Yes, sir.
For everybody, I mean, for this entire city. We've got to get this together. So have you had any conversations with them about that yet?
No, sir. I would recommend that you use your political expertise to talk to the person that you know best on the school board, to tell them, look, it's not, put the trust and the fear side, shelve it.
Okay.
Let's work together. Let's understand your budget. Let the public understand your budget. Let the public understand what your needs are.
Speaking of the public, this is very good. Can you give us synopsis of this prior to our public hearing?
That's a grand idea. Yes, sir.
We'd be happy to do that.
And John, I just want to clarify one comment you made.
All right.
For all of the confusion of numbers that are coming out to us, the numbers that you've used in this example come from their CAFRs that are correct. They're not something generated out of thin air.
Amen.
These are, you know, I mean, for the public's justification, I want to be sure everybody understands, the first, you know, 10 lines there, down to the $132,000, are real numbers.
That's correct.
Well, down to the 127 are real numbers, you know. Now, maybe inflation needs to be 2.5%, 3%, 4%, whatever, but those first numbers are real numbers that can be documented.
Exactly.
And an important thing, Elizabeth, is this is an increase of what was funded last year, a year that produced surplus.
Right.
So if you have the same money that you had last year, unless you have some $12 million worth of, worth of.
Increases.
Increases, you should have about the same surplus or whatever the difference is in increases again.
Sure. Well, I mean, I love the way this, this is very helpful to me, because I'm a visual girl. Like I said, even if the school board decided, which they have a right to do, they can disagree with us and say what they said at this table, we don't want to consolidate, we don't want to do health insurance, we don't want to self-insure, we don't like that plan, we don't want to do it, and they have a right to say that, that's still only, that's still less than $1 million. It still doesn't flip this figure in the red.
No.
It doesn't change anything.
And I'm not African pushing, if they don't want to do the merger, that's fine. The important thing I want to, whether you do that, whether you do the merger or not.
It's still enough.
There's still a cost, a budget increase, whether you merge anything or not. That's the important thing.
But if they did it, that's money we could have in the classroom. I think that, I'm still upset about the teachers.
But the bottom line is, all of us are part of what goes into the funding for our city and our children, and we ought to be able to sit together and discuss it in a way, because it's going to benefit everybody. The citizens need to know exactly what's going on, and we should have a knowledge of it, but the thing is, we have to recognize the fact. But the thing is, we have to recognize the fact that we have two elected boards. And what we need to make sure is that we send the correct message in terms of what is going on and what it is that we're trying to do.
That's where you...
We are trying to build unity for the welfare and health of our city. We are not seeking to divide. And it's for the future of the generations going to come up after us.
Amen and amen. That's where you could use your best political skills, pick the school board person that you're closest to, and tell them that, you know...
We got to.
Don't see us as a threat. See us as a resource. I mean, we want to become their biggest advocate. How cool would it be for us to be advocating for the schools? That's what we want to do.
We got to be.
But we've got to create this baseline. We've got to create this budget so that we all know, is the electric bill $2 million or is it $4 million? Is school bus funding, I mean, gas, $600,000 or is it $900,000? And again, in a non-threatening way, those two people, I named one, the other's our comptroller, Peggy Morrison. The nice thing about Peggy is that she's only been here less than a year. So, she doesn't have any political package at all. She is a sharp woman. Both of these women are sharp. And they could be, they could be very helpful to our community.
Mr. Moody.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things, John. What is Dr. Stuckwish? Has he, has he looked at, been provided this information?
No, sir. And I'll send it to him.
I mean, that, I think that's an important piece. Along with, I think each of the school board members should be provided the information. You know, as far as us contacting our favorite school board member, that's fine and dandy. I think the, I think the public needs to be well-grounded in this information and let them weigh in.
And that's why I think, Paige...
To Ms. Randall's point, they are elected by the same people that we are. So, they need to, they need to hear, hear from the public.
Dr. Pittman.
Thank you, Mayor. I think you've given us something where we can talk to some. And I feel like, I know I've talked to a few, and I'm sure others here at the table have talked with some school board members, but having some good talking points and something visual to show that makes sense, that you can explain, has been very beneficial tonight.
Thank you, sir.
And it is about bringing not only unity, but bringing some closure to the division about what's been going on with the school systems, budget and money-wise. So, I think this would be a great help. And I think all of us need to put our best effort in making this happen and put it to rest.
And when I talk about your political skills, I'm talking about talking to that person that you're most comfortable talking to on the school board about saying, we're here as a resource. We've got good, we've got a good bench. I mean, we've got a dream team on the fifth floor as finance is concerned. And we can send two people down, that could be their reporting place. They don't need to come up to the fifth floor. But we're prepared to...
Before you move on, I think we need to, and I think we've all hit on, talking to the superintendent and the school board and reconciling the differential between that $5 million increase that they're having. And until we sit down and have that conversation, whoever that is, we're gonna be talking around each other and providing numbers to two different boards that says one's right and one's wrong. They say they got a $5.2 million increase that they're incurring. We need to sit down and talk with them. And whoever that is, it needs to occur so we're not talking across each other. Because this is great, but it's not the picture that they're painting. Okay? And we can go on forever trying to say who's the best artist. We need to reconcile those numbers. And if nothing else, create some type of category for any potential overages and put something in there so they can move forward with their budget. And if they can't vote to hire teachers or do certain things without knowing that they know upfront in the beginning of the year that they're fully funded for, they're not gonna do it. So, they put them in a comfort zone. If we know they're not gonna spend the money, and we know it's only a couple of million or whatever the differential is, if you're showing two with the best scenario there with the Senate, and they're saying they got a five, put the money in a category that neither one of us can touch and allow them to go through this year as we go through this categorical accounting process. And if we're right, then the money will still be there at the end of the year. The fear I have is like last year, if the school board decides they're not comfortable with what we're presenting to them, and they can overspend their budget, then they're not gonna go in the beginning of the year to do something. And that's because they fear that overspending puts them in violation, which it does. So, if we're saying they're not, okay? And we've got the money to cover what we're saying, then we probably need to do that so we can get on with the wedding and stop this handing out pieces of paper saying which side is right or wrong. Because we're not gonna get there any other way. I don't see it.
Well, I appreciate what you're saying. But they don't get up and tell you that, you know, they're not gonna overspend their budget, and they haven't. Well, they have. I mean, their own capper shows that on two occasions, they have overspent their budget. So, that's a bit of fiction. And...
I mean, but again, if we're comfortable with that, still, we have the money to sit there to be able to float that. Because what I don't want is that list that the superintendent and the school board has put out of the potential things that they're gonna have to cut to make up for this $5.2 million. And that has created a lot of conversation and fear within the community as well as the school division. And that's not fair. And I don't want that pointed at this council. And again, unless we can reconcile that, we need to put the money up and have it in a lockbox, for a better word, to make sure that those programs are not cut. And the fear of teachers and others thinking they're gonna lose their job is squished so we can move on.
I think you and I are saying the same thing.
Let me see something, John. Mayor, there's no such thing as a place enforcement that money we can't touch. It's city money, as council. So, that doesn't matter. The schools returned some $11 million?
13. Yeah, closer to 13.
Okay. This past year. So, that money is in the money that we're appropriating this year. Okay? So, unless they have $12 million of increases, $13 to $14 million of increases...
They should be the fun.
They are subject to having another $10 to $11 million surplus. Now, what happens in normal government places? For example, where I work, when you have a $13 million surplus one year, you get $13 million less next year. We are not advocating that. We're gonna give them at least, at least $1.5 million and maybe $2.4 million extra next year. So, I don't have a problem with what you're saying, let's do the 2.4 extra. I'm fine with that. But we don't need to put no money in, there's no such thing as a lockbox that these seven people around this table can't get into. So, we can do the 2.4, but we need to stop saying that they're gonna be short money. Because if they do exactly what they did this year, exactly what they did this year with $2.4 million extra, that means next year they're subject to have $15 million surplus.
I think we all understand that. And it's not about this seven...
That's simple math there.
Vice Mayor. It's not about this seven can't touch it. That board has to decide whether or not they're gonna fund something at the front end of the year, irregardless of whether we can touch it or not, or whether or not you promise them, if you do this, we'll do that. They need something to go on at the front end of the year. They've said that over and over again. So, if we're that confident, then we can set the money there, put it over there, but don't let them touch it until it get to a point where they have expended those other funds. It's not about us seven. It's about...
You can't give them money, tell them they can't touch it. You can't give them money and tell them they can't touch it. We give them the money, and they're elected board, and they spend it as they see fit.
Well, for one thing, for one thing, it's not our money to give.
It's the citizens' money.
It's coming from the taxpayers.
That's right.
And the taxpayers expect accountability.
Right.
And in doing that, would be foolish.
I think I can help.
They have to explain to the public why they're being cut, when they had a surplus of almost $13 million last year.
So, you're prepared to allow those programs and those teachers to hit the street because of accounting differences?
That's not gonna happen, Mayor. They had $13 million left over last year.
What I recommend that you do, again, is that we send two of our finest down there to help, as resource. Believe me, they're in this right. They don't have a CFO. That CFO doesn't report to work. With all due respect to Chris Steele, Chris Steele's background is not in finances, in procurement. And there's a world of difference in booking entries and figuring out caffers that, from procurement. Second, I have recommended that you do quarterly appropriations, which gives you the chance to fine-tune the engine as time goes forward.
And that's the safety net right there.
Yes, sir.
If we're doing quarterly appropriations, we see it's running in the ditch. We can react rather quickly.
I'm watching the clock. You've asked us to start off the public hearing with that, so we'll give it to Debra. And can we go to our last item?
Sure.
Okay. The last item is the details of the Parks and Recreation Plan. The Parks and Recreation Plan was adopted, the master plan, in 2012. You gave me an assignment during the course of the last 12 months, which was find a way to implement this plan. And what we're gonna give you is that recommendation on how to implement this. And it's a five-year... Now, the important thing to understand about this plan was that there was a big civic participation process involved in this. It involves the community. And so, it's not the consultant's plan of when it arrived on your desk for your consideration in June of 2012. It had great partnership from the community. And one of the words that you'll see in the recommendation from this plan is the term maintenance. But maintenance is an expansive word here. It's a catch-all for all the deferred maintenance that we allow to happen over decades with our facilities. So, when you look at the term maintenance, and our presenters will drive this home tonight, think about bringing, it's not the daily maintenance of sweeping the floor or cutting the grass. It's bringing up our facilities. And facilities is a big term, too, because our facilities include everything from a recreation center to city park. And just think about all the components that it, city park, got a boat ramp, we got a train, we got a golf course, we got a building, we got a snack bar, we got playground equipment. And so, let's get Margaret and Londa and Nita together. Who's gonna lead off?
Margaret's going to lead off.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Available for questions.
This is a, this plan, we started working on this plan the day after you gave this homework assignment. And so, Margaret, take it away.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, other guests. Ms. Gill and I are extremely excited to share with you this evening our strategic plan for recreation, which is based on the results of the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. It is my pleasure to introduce to you what we, our theme, Real Neighborhoods. Real Neighborhoods is the overall theme for this strategic plan, and this is what's driving our train, recreation that encourage ageless livability. And this will be addressed throughout this entire presentation. Throughout this presentation, there are gonna be four key points that we're going to really, really get into. And those key points are the master plan, which Mr. Rowe already alluded to, that was adopted in June by the council. This plan had complete community input. It was a lot of community involvement during this process. And the study time was from March until, as you can see, to June. And this included, again, I'm reiterating, included a complete comprehensive civic engagement. The next key point is the current state, which where we are, some of the projects we've already started. The next plan is our facility plans, the recommendations and everything that we're recommending based on the master plan, and of course, our new program initiatives. Again, as Mr. Rowe alluded to, one of the key things in this master plan talked about maintenance. Maintenance was the number-one priority. And basically, the study showed that, like he said, it was deferred maintenance. The lack of proper maintenance was the main reason why people say they don't use our Parks and Recreation facilities. And they use other facilities simply because of the condition. The second, again, maintenance is the number...
And this is a direct quote, right from the plan. So, you could go to page 90 and find this quote.
Thank you. Yes, we put the pages there for you, too, so you can have it as a reference. Again, second point, maintenance is the first priority as opposed to a new state-of-the-art facility. And basically stating that although constructing a new centrally-located state-of-the-art recreation center may be an idea, but maintenance of existing facilities should be our first priority. Second priority should be to fill in the gaps of coverage, which we're already doing with collaborations with the schools and some private enterprises as well. The next point is to use existing schools, which we have already started. We have James Hurst Elementary. We're in Crowder Middle, and as of yesterday, we started in Douglas Park.
And note what they're saying is that, okay, where you have gaps, the most cost-effective way to fill the gap is to use schools. Schools that already exist that have both a building and open area.
And...
And again, that's from 100, page 102 of the report.
And it was very evident that the citizens wanted to utilize existing facilities as opposed to creating a new state-of-the-art facility. The third, the next component is to develop more awareness of programs. And those are some things that we're gonna discuss in terms of new programs and initiative that we're gonna implement, as well as with the new facilities. Improve security. We've already spoken with the chief in reference to that. We're gonna provide a balance of programs. Right now, we wanna expand on our programs for youth and adults. We wanna make it, like the theme says, ageless. Provide more programs, as I reiterated, and then focus on more youth programs. Next thing, communication. We're gonna actually actively divide, we've met with marketing, and we've come up with some great marketing tools to be able to put these programs out there. We've already created an identity, which is our real, which is gonna be our identity for this. And then, one of the things that I really wanna emphasize is, in a number of studies, it says quality parks and recreation are one of the top three reasons that businesses cite given in reasons for relocating. We wanna use this as a key component, to be able to use this as a selling point to say, okay, we've got this weight room, we've got all these new programs, and we wanna be able to share this with people to bring them into our city. And in terms of the recommendation, we're gonna, again, we're gonna maintain our current facilities. We're gonna bring our existing facilities. And we're gonna show you throughout this presentation how we plan to bring our existing facilities up to standard. We're gonna fill in the gaps of services while using the schools, and we're gonna improve and increase programs for all citizens.
That's the Reader's Digest distillation of the recommendations that are in this report. If you want it in one slide, four bullet points, that's it. These 108 pages say, bring everything up to standard, fill in the gaps with the use of schools, increase and improve the programs for all citizens.
Absolutely.
And improve our marketing strategies. And we're gonna make...
And one of the things, too, was people were saying, we don't know you have classes. These are things that people just didn't know. We didn't know you have after-school programs. We didn't know you had these things. So, now, we're gonna actually have a marketing plan in place. So, this information will be distributed everywhere. And like Mr. Rowe alluded to, it's for all of our citizens. Okay? Ms. Gill is gonna come with you now and share with you some, the current state in our facilities plan.
Okay. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
All right. How many of you recognize what that is?
That's my number.
Know what it is?
Yes.
All right. That's great. Do you plan on going this summer? You gonna go? Very good. Let me update you.
Have babies.
You've been there already? You have babies.
I have babies.
We want you to bring them. And it's free. How about that? Talk to you about the current capital improvement plans that we have going on. Talk to you about the current capital improvement plans that we have going on. If you notice Cavalier, here, we're replacing the tennis courts. We're hoping to have that done by May of this year. We're also gonna install new lighting. At City Park, we're resurfacing, seeing the tennis courts, replacing the nests, the nets and the posts. At City Park, we've already installed five new shelters down by the water at the boat landing, where we didn't have enough. At City Park in Churchland, we're installing handicap ADA accessible swings. Craddock Skate Park, we're gonna add a new pike and a wall. Highland Biltmore, we're gonna install, install new softball field lighting. And then Highland Lansing, we built a brand-new ADA, ADA compliant playground. Has anyone seen that yet? It's absolutely gorgeous. Take your children by there.
Now, this is the current year, 2013, 2014.
Do you wanna have any questions? Good. Okay. Other existing programs we have in the current year are J.E. Parker, we're gonna replace the bleachers. JFK Center, we're gonna install a new playground, a recreation center. The playground is actually done, the fencing is the next phase of that improvement. At Mountain Herman Park, we're gonna install a new basketball court and fencing. Neighborhood, we're gonna place those old wooden bleachers we have with the plastic ones. At Paradise Creek, we received a grant to do a new ADA boat and kayak, kayak launch. We're also gonna do an education pavilion there and a wetland education center at Paradise Creek Park. Wilson High School, we're replacing those tennis courts. We've installed internet at the rec centers and also Wi-Fi at all the recreation centers. All of these are current projects we're working on for this budget year. Currently, we have 15 before and after-school care programs in the elementary schools. That's important because statistics prove that when you have structured activities for kids after school, it diminishes a lot of things. And it helps them not to belatch key kids, it decreases drug use, it also reduces boredom and alcohol by as much as 50 percent. That's a huge statistic. So anytime you have structured activities with kids, it's just better for them. An additional study showed that high school students involved in organized activities have higher self-esteem, higher grades, higher educational aspirations, lower delinquency rates, and a greater sense of control over their lives. A study conducted by Bayview Safe Harbor After-School Program finds that crime programs, crime problems, excuse me, in the area fell between three and four times from previous reports. That's from after-school care, structured programs, and involvement. The Baltimore Police Department, power officers that we also have here and work with Chief Harvis with, the crime juvenile rate in their neighborhood dropped by 10 percent. And if you look at the teens becoming involved in crimes, it was reduced by half by having a structured after-school care program. So the program is really, really important. Last week, we had the PIT here in Portsmouth. I know a lot of you attended that. When we had the luncheon, several of our students there had highest GPAs, highest SOL rates, and all of these people were involved in organized sports and activities. So we know that organized activities, after-school care programs, really make a difference in the lives of children.
And most of them had dual sports, played dual sports.
There's one point I do want to mention here, and that's a comparison between the Boys and Girls Club, because it had been brought up earlier. What we have been able to see over time, when we looked at the schools that are identified and read, those have a Boys and Girls Club in their after-school program. The schools that are, have the lines of blue are the six-to-six program, and the black line is just sort of the SOL average. And we took the third-grade reading results, and basically, we have found no real difference in SOL performance for schools that either have the Boys and Girls Club or the six-to-six program. So we do believe that an after-school program will work. Now, if there are differences between schools, it's probably for a different reason other than the after-school program that's currently in those schools.
My mind is, not one program is better than the other. Both are good. And this is a longitudinal look that goes back to 2008, 2009. It's quite a bit, and this is research that we did, and I commend our research team for coming up with this analysis.
Do you know what it roughly costs for, for a school for six-to-six?
What was your question?
What it costs for a school for six-to-six, the program?
Yes, I can give you those prices. But before, it's $140 a month, for after, it's $190, and combined, it's $245. And that's per month.
Are you saying for the yearly costs?
So what's the cost, what's the cost for us to decide to put it on?
Do you have that number, what we average in terms of spending? What do we, where we all with that carol?
To give you a specific cost for the teachers, we use paraprofessionals, who are actually schoolteachers at the schools, along with our staff. So the payroll from the beginning of the program, which was, you know, July 1st of last year through June, total salaries for paraprofessionals, we've only spent $48,000. That's it.
It's pretty cost-effective.
Right, it is very cost-effective.
A function of the number of students.
There's a whole lot cheaper than Boys and Girls Club.
Boys and Girls Club, they're $150 per school.
Boys and Girls Club, one corporate board, it costs us $160,000 a year, roughly, in each one of the schools that we have in here. So that's-
Six-to-six is not a for-profit. They basically break even every year.
They break even, but it pays for the program, which is good.
Nor is the Boys and Girls Club.
And Vice Mayor, we actually have 52 pairers on payroll.
We have 52 pairers.
I think the difference probably is the staff you have from Parks and Recreation, they're already on payroll. So we already, we already have that cost. Whereas the Boys and Girls Club, that's a whole new, that's a whole new staff that everybody's getting paid.
And the other side of that, with the pairers, the children are familiar with them because they're, and the pairers know what homework they have and where they're all with scores in. I mean, that helps us as well.
The six-to-six program uses the professionals within the school system and that school. The Boys and Girls Club brings in a different group of people, so we're actually using those paraprofessionals.
Now, we're still talking about-
How did you go back on Waters Middle School, all the way back to '09? And we just started that last year. And then on the Douglas Park, there was absolutely no Boys and Girls Club program for about three years. And we just started that one back. So you're going all the way back to '09, and you got data points there, and they weren't existing. The only one that was, was the Hodges Manor, which is one of the highest-producing ones. So we just opened up the Boys and Girls Club at Waters and at Douglas Park. So how were you able to plot points back the last two or three years?
These are SOL scores. These aren't-
Oh, those are SOL.
Yes, sir.
So you don't have the existence when the programs were in place, because-
You can look at-
Two of those, the bottom ones you got in red are two that are just getting started up.
They're not just getting started.
No, they're not. Let's take Hodges Manor. If you look at Hodges Manor, that's-
That's the top one.
But if you look at this top blue line here, that one represents a school that is a Parks and Rec school that's blue, which is slightly higher than Hodges Manor. So again, that's how we drew our conclusion. The Boys and Girls Club versus six-to-six, there really is no significant difference as long as there's an after-school program.
Did you have a six-to-six program in either Waters or Douglas Park?
We have it in Douglas Park before and after. And in Hodges Manor, we have it in the before.
Waters Middle is, you don't have after-school for Waters Middle, for middle schools. We just added the Waters Middle School.
But they're comparing the SOL scores.
Just the SOL score.
Absolutely. Just the grade reading.
Not when, you know-
Even if you were, those clubs have been, didn't just open up.
Right, right. And we have dual programs in Douglas Park.
Absolutely. We shared Douglas Park.
Boys and Girls.
Right. And to reiterate real quick, the Hodges Manor program, the demand for the parents was for the before. Okay? So that's why the school, we were able to work that out. She called me and said, we need something for before. So we do before there, and they have the after for Boys and Girls Club.
This is so much fun. I mean, really. But I'm watching the clock.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Rowe.
Yeah, this is a, this is a map that shows the current facilities. And remember, a facility can be anything from something as complex as City Park to a rec center to a park at, like at Shea Terrace, the waterfront park at Port Norfolk. So we have a grand variety of facilities. But let's go back one time. The stars are where we do have centers. The dots are other facilities. Hodges Manor, for example, over here, soccer. Go out there on a Saturday, it's just alive with kids. Go to Churchland, it is very much a recreational facility. At nighttime, they bring their own lights to practice out there.
And just to give you an example, at City Park, in one month, we do approximately 116 different events at City Park in one month.
Sure do.
All right. Now, we tried-
No, it's okay.
Yeah, we tried to break it down in geographic areas that people would understand. And 23701 is separated by the interstate. So that's why you have a 23701 north and a 23701 south. And Wanda's gonna take you through, and this is a synopsis of our current inventory. I want you to remember this slide, because when we get to the end, we'll have a five-year slide, and we'll have different totals.
Okay. I'm gonna speed through this. If you look at this playgrounds, we have 12 centers, there are eight ball fields, 11 pools. We have one at Cavalier Manor, tennis complexes, four skate park, one at Craddock. So that's a total amenities we have right now is 37. That's the magic number we want you to remember, because we're gonna reference that later. Notice, observation, is that 23703 has no recreation centers, and 23704 has no ball fields with organized sports. The other thing to keep in mind is that NRPA, which is a national standard for recreation, recommends that one playground for every 100 children be available for the ages of children between the 0 and 11.
1,000.
1,000, I'm sorry. That's the national standard. Okay? Where you gonna say something? Demographic information, the highest population's 23701, the highest percentage of students ready for SOLs, 23707, third-grade SOL rates, 23701 and 23703 are tied at 80 percent. The highest crime rate is in 23704 at 74 percent.
And that's crimes committed by youth. And the definition of youth is?
Between the ages of 10 and 17 years of age.
That's right.
We were trying to see if there's any conclusions that we can draw. And remember what Wanda said about 23704.
The lack of ball fields with organized sports is the key item that differentiates 23704 from all other zip codes. This difference may also have an impact on the SOL rates. Because if you think about the stats I gave you earlier, when children are in organized after-school care programs, it has a huge impact on the success in life.
And it's the SOL and the crime rates.
Both that are impacted. That's correct. That we believe. All right.
Don't forget the first presentation that we made. Remember the $155 for recreation? Remember the amount for intervention?
That's right. That's right.
All right, now, we're gonna go through and break that inventory down by geographic places.
This was important to know, because all of this data, census data from the U.S. Census tract is done by zip code. So that's why we have it broken down this way. So if you notice, I wanna point out the gaps in services. 23701 north, 23703 have no recreation centers. Current ball fields, if you notice, once again, 23704, highest crime rate, lowest SOL scores, no ball field, nothing there.
I don't have any there.
No, no ma'am, no doubt. Current playgrounds, 23701 City Park, Craddock has one that we're gonna move across the street where the skateboard park is, while that's under construction. And we just built a brand-new tot park at City Park that's across the street from the existing one. Current pools, tennis courts, and skate parks, we have one pool at Cavalier Manor, tennis courts at City Park, Cavalier Manor, Churchland, and one skate park at Craddock. So our number-one goal, and this is really critical, is that one of the things determined in the master plan was that we need to establish benchmarks of how do you determine what the maintenance level for recreation centers should be? How do we decide what to do to the recreation centers and improve them, bring them to like new, take them to silver, take them to gold? So our categories are as such. Bring centers to basic level, upgrade centers to silver, upgrade centers to gold, and these are the basic criteria of those three options. In the next slide, I'll break that down a little bit further.
Does everybody understand this? We said, okay, let's establish three, three categories. Go from the very basic to the gold standard. And this is what, this is how we're gonna categorize things going forward from this slide.
To give you more detailed information, if you look at the basic recreation center, these are the features of that. If you look at a silver recreation center, these are those features in addition to these features. And if you look at the gold standard, it's all of these features is what makes it the gold standard.
Yeah, very, what is?
So that's our three different categories. This is what it's going to cost for the basic level to get our centers to like new, just to repair the existing facilities we have at Cavalier Manor and Jim, John F. Kennedy, 4096, Neighborhood Center, 916819, J.E. Parker, Port Norfolk, Senior Center, for a total of $4 million to get our facilities just to like new condition. Nothing fancy, no lipstick on the pig, just to get the pig well. This is how much money we need.
So you're saying right now, we don't have a gold, a silver, or even a basic?
That's exactly.
So what we've got, okay. I mean, we knew that, but okay.
Remember what the first priority was.
Four million dollars just to get it to where the kids are still not gonna come. Because if you're not, if you're not silver or gold, they're not coming. And that's why they've abandoned most of these things. If you don't have swimming pools, if you don't have the ball fields and all the organized things, I mean, and once you lose them, it's gonna take a huge marketing campaign and other things to try to get them back once you've spent, well, you need to spend the 18.
But the, but the goal is not keeping children away, it's the fact that we're below basic. And it's not only children now. Remember what the goal is. Even in this plan, Parks and Recreation is a department for everybody, not just for one segment of our population.
But when you're talking crime rate and dropout rates and all of those things, it's these 25,000 kids and 14,500 of them in our school system that we really have to be targeting. And our seniors and all can use those facilities, but that's what, you're gonna get your biggest bang for the buck, comparing it with SOLs and dropout rates and graduation rates. So we can't make it balanced when we know that's gotta be our target, because that's why we, what do we, just get named number-two worst city in the state?
That was before our plan, sir.
Before our plan.
Before our plan. It's about to change.
I hadn't heard that.
It's about to change.
So anyway, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
But before you go on, on something in there, too, one of the things that we do, we have a tendency of promising things when we develop communities, and we never follow through with what the intended plans were. And I'm young enough to remember that beginning out in Cavalier Manor, with the swimming pool, it was understanding that that would be one point in time closed in. It's never been done, so it can only be used when the sun is shining and it's hot. And yet, in other communities, as pools were built, they were enclosed as they developed the communities. And these are inequities throughout our cities. We don't have to be deaf, done, and blind not to see them. But I'm saying that people invested with the understanding that these things were going to come to their communities. They've never received them. And I think that's something we need to look at, because they're still there, but you can only use them when the weather is warm. And yet, we are talking about looking at other communities, all of these communities need them. I think when we think about it, we need to come up with an equitable way where we can provide the needs for our young people, wherever they may be. And the seniors like me, I enjoy swimming. But I'm saying that we need to make sure.
We're gonna address it. And our plan that actually talks about-
She's gonna bring that up.
We're gonna bring that up.
Thank you, honey.
We're gonna show you how we're gonna address that, too.
All right.
Show me those other pools.
Thank you, baby.
Our next, of the master plan, one, two, and three, our facilities plan, is this is about how we're gonna improve our facilities. So once again, we're gonna bring Cavalier Manor up to silver level with a pool.
Let's do this, folks.
Our Neighborhood Recreation Center, we're gonna bring that up to silver level with a pool. JFK, we're gonna convert that to a teen center at the basic level, Joseph Parker at the basic level, Port Norfolk, basic level, and the senior station at basic level. Now, keep in mind, when I say basic level, there's some additional things for the seniors we're gonna do. For example, add automatic doors. Right now, where the seniors come to the senior center, they have to have to pull the door open, and if you're in a walker or in a wheelchair, you can't do that. So the basic level will allow us to go to ADA compliance.
Wanda, please mention that on the pools, that those pools, if they're not indoor, they are tinted pools and heated, so they can be used year-round. There's a way to have a pool accessible year-round.
Absolutely.
So we're going to enclose the one at Cavalier Manor?
Yes, yes. We could put a dome over that. And actually, when I worked for the city of Norfolk, we actually closed that pool over with a dome. So we're gonna do the same premise.
Remember, we only have one pool now. We don't have...
We only have one now.
Yeah, that, that pack's important. We, we don't have a lot of pools.
That's right.
We got one. One's not a lot.
About four.
Okay, move forward, okay.
That's right.
One of the things for the master plan, the recommendation was use of schools. Right now, we're gonna use Doug Simondsdale, Douglas Park, which we're already in. And let me emphasize that we're gonna add a new gym to Douglas Park. Okay? A brand-new gym. And if you've seen the one at James Hurst, it's gonna be that similar layout, which is absolutely, actually, the wood floor.
With the wood floor.
Beautiful facility. Uh, Craddock Middle School, we're using right now. We're averaging at Craddock per week, actually, per day, fifty kids at Craddock, every single day. Uh, James Hurst Elementary School, we're averaging about thirty-five kids a day at James Hurst for that program. Churchland Primary will open May the sixth. Brighton Elementary School, we're gonna renovate that field. And all the playgrounds and tennis courts will be accessible to all the citizens across the entire city. Not just for one group, for everyone.
There's one important note here for James Hurst and Churchland Primary. Those are two new gyms. The gym floors are not hardwood. A part of the CIP plan that we're proposing is to install hardwood floors so that those gyms are playable by the leagues in those areas.
And Churchland Wood?
And Churchland Primary.
Right, and the primary, yes.
Right. Okay.
For the Churchland Primary, so that was just renovated, uh...
Right, but it doesn't have to be wooden.
They didn't put a wooden floor?
No, no, no. None of the elementary gyms have wooden floors. It's not, it wasn't designed for league play, but now we're going to make it so it's designed for league play.
So we're also gonna use some existing assets, which is Old Churchland Library. We're gonna make that a community recreation center, renovate it, and add a pool. And then at Girls Inc., we've already, are already in negotiations with them to offer swim classes, aqua aerobics, adult swim classes with the Girls Inc. in Portsmouth. That's already in the works.
Remember, this is the five-year plan now.
Right, right.
Girls Inc. pool will be next year, though. That will be...
Oh, you had that money laying around.
Yeah.
No, we were gonna get it from you.
Yes.
Let's, let's focus on this next slide.
All right. At the completion of our five-year plan, we are so excited about this. This is what the city of Portsmouth is going to look like. Now, remember when I started this, I addressed the inadequacies of services. Look at how many different facilities we've added. And you notice it goes from 23701 north all the way to 23707. Everyone gets something.
Super.
Isn't that awesome? We are so excited about this plan. So if you look at the neighborhood centers, if you look at the ball fields at the bottom, go to the next slide, if you look at the playgrounds, look at how many playgrounds we're gonna go under this plan.
I would like to mention too, in the playgrounds, Hodges Manor, we're proposing a brand-new playground. Victory, we're proposing a brand-new playground. We are looking to add a new playground in the Craddock area that's on the opposite side of the, um, George Washington Highway, so that we don't have smaller kids attracted to those playgrounds. And we have, we still have to determine that site. We're proposing a brand-new playground at Emily Spong and a brand-new playground at Mount Herman. Those areas in those schools, those playgrounds have to remain unlocked, and we wanna negotiate that opportunity with the school systems as well. But it will be dual-purpose. The schools will use them and the communities.
So the funding from that is coming from the CDGG grant. Thank you, gentlemen. It's gonna play for those new playgrounds we're gonna put in. They're assisting us with that. Okay? If you look at the pools, Girls Inc. pool, Cavalier Manor pool renovation, Churchland pool, and Neighborhood pool. So we go from one pool to four pools. How awesome is that?
In five years.
In five years.
The Neighborhood is at the Elm Avenue.
And if you look at the tennis courts there and skate parks, we have one skate park at Craddock. We're proposing one, two, three, four.
Coming up for a second.
Four, sorry.
For those people at home, and I typically don't do that, Neighborhood's the old armory.
Yes.
The old armory on Elm Avenue.
That's right.
Now, you guys are wondering about the money. I will tell you that this entire five-year CIP plan totals eight-point-five million dollars.
Yeah.
For all of these programs.
All right. Planned inventory of new facilities from 2014 to 2019. Important to emphasize, if you look at, we had twelve playgrounds, we're gonna go to fourteen centers. We had eight, we're gonna add, I'm sorry, add fourteen, I apologize. Centers, we have eight, we're gonna add four additional locations. Ball fields, we're gonna add another one. Pools, we're gonna add three. Tennis complexes, we're gonna add one. Skate parks, we're gonna add four. Current totals, so we're gonna add, remember that number I told you, remember? Thirty-seven? We're going from thirty-seven to sixty-five different parks, pools, recreation centers, skate parks, tennis courts, in five years.
Five years.
You'll be watching?
That's right.
Sign the check, sir. Sign the check.
That's right.
All right. Planned recreation, that was the before, this is the after plan. Once everything is added, this is what our wonderful city is going to look like. Look at all the different amenities. Isn't that awesome?
The whole city can be served.
That's right. The whole city will be served. All right.
Okay. Now, for the sake of time, I'm gonna go through these really, really quick. Now, although we've set our goals and we've got all these new facilities, we're gonna be able to, at this point, we're gonna do, establish a baseline on how our participation for the year 2014, 2015, we wanna be able to see how these, the changes have increased our participation. And we're gonna use that as the baseline for 2016. We're gonna have our increased, uh, community involvement, we're gonna start new sports leagues. We currently have twenty, we wanna, we wanna double that. We currently have, um, about seven hundred children in our sports leagues. We would like to get that number up to about six thousand children. Uh, we're gonna start some new community recreation initiatives, which would include going into the community and helping them through the, through the Virginia Corporate Extension, establishing gardens and, and community improvements. Those are some of the things we're gonna do, and we're gonna continue to expand our program delivery.
Okay. Yes. When we talk about expanding our program delivery, we're gonna actually put our exercise programs on, on the television station. So you can go to our local TV station and watch morning aerobic classes before you go to work. And in the evening, take some how-to classes. All that will be on TV, and all that is in the next slide, too. These are some of the new programs.
And this is not a pipe dream. They've contacted, there's a Hampton Roads crew.
Yes.
Group.[1550.13]